It is 5:02 PM on Monday, January 13th, 2025. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. President R. Myself, President Bumpus, Vice President Campbell, Director Barnes, Director Ed Scorn, Director Whitfield, Superintendent Woodward, Student Representatives, Sophia Willett, a little late today, and Myron Robinson, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda, which can be found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I really appreciate it. I think the people do too. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comment must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.05, Approval of the Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated January 13, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion, a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated January 13, 2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 4.01, Consideration of Donations. Director Barnes?
Okay, this is a really long list because we have a lot of amazing individuals and businesses within this community that continue to invest in our students. So it is my honor to read this list. First one, we have Take the Next Step in partnership with Subaru's Operation Warm Program that has donated 110 coats for our students in need. Chain Lake Elementary PTA has donated $2,346.63 for the Sole and Express Purpose of purchasing four new handheld radios. Chain Lake Elementary has also donated $1,584 for the Sole and Express Purpose of purchasing a six-month Scholastic Magazine subscription for classrooms. Bearcat Pride has donated $500 to Esther Stanton Daily for the Burke Museum Field Trip. That's actually a really cool place. Bearcat Pride has also donated $225 for the Fall Concession payout to the following activities: $75 to girls softball, $25 to boys soccer, $75 to DECA, and $50 to the sports med. Pilchuck Audubon Society has donated $500 to Francesca Moeen at Salem Woods Elementary for the Classroom Conservation Project. Francesca is amazing, I love her. Pilchuck, or the grocery outlet, no, Pilchuck Audubon again, Society has donated $500 to Angela Height at Salem Woods Elementary for the Classroom Conservation Project. I'm actually really excited to learn more about that and hear from these teachers. Then we have Grocery Outlet that gave a monetary grant of $1,000 to the Academy of Critical Thinking at Sky Valley Education Center. Washington Native Plant Society gave a monetary grant of $440.19 for the final dispersment of original grant funds that were awarded to purchase books and native plants for the ESS program at Sky Valley Education Center. And we have William Creasy, who has donated $1,000 for the Sole and Express Purpose of Enrichment of the Monroe High School Choir Program. And last but not least, Snohomish First Presbyterian gave a monetary grant in the amount of $300 for the Sole and Express Purpose of Funds for the Cooking Club budget and activities. Thank you, thank you so much for all that you do for the students in this district. We truly appreciate you.
Thank you, Director Barnes. Agenda Item 4.02, we have student representatives to help highlight some of the student activities throughout the district. Myron is up.
Good evening, everyone. I don't really have much to talk about since school kind of just started getting back in from winter break, but we do have an MLK Assembly this Friday, so I hope that's gonna go well. And then boys' basketball is doing pretty good. They just won against Salton. I think the score was very, very high. Monroe beat Salton by a lot. It's bad. That's really all I have, because as you guys know, we're getting back from winter break, but if I do think of some more stuff, I would ask, and I'll be sure to inform you guys.
Any questions from Myron?
What was it like for the first day of Unity Week today at the school?
It was actually really good. I saw a lot of happy faces. I saw a lot of smiles, so that was really good. It was glad to see people smiling. It was definitely, I feel like, to start off the week, it was what people needed.
On Friday, or no, we were there on Thursday for our visit, but I saw one of the posters had a donut on it. I was like, now who couldn't be happy looking at a donut? No, but it was awesome, the different posters that were made that just had all the different happy expressions on them and stuff. I couldn't help but feel happy just looking at them, so that was pretty awesome.
Myron, what's the buzz with the going to the new school schedule from date six period?
There are a lot of unhappy people, from what I've heard. Everyone's worried about their electives and how that will affect the early arrival and late release. As far as that, there's really not much to speak on right now because it's still like fresh in people's minds, so they're trying to get their thoughts and feelings together about it, but there are a lot of mixed feelings about it. Like, some people are all for it, and then other people are not ready for it. I think it'll be, I think it'll be good if people just have to get used to it, give it a chance, so we'll see how that goes next year.
I have a follow-up question, and I'm gonna ask you this, continuing. About the cellphone policy, do you have any observations about kids not having access, you know, not having the phones during class, and how that is going across with the kids?
I feel like it's actually going great. I feel like there is more connections being made without the cellphones being used in class. Students and teachers are making more connections. More work is getting done. That's good, but there are still a couple of kids that just not following through with the program, so yes, it's getting better. I feel like it's getting a lot better.
So with the schools, call it discipline necessarily, but with their approach for, you know, using it when they're not supposed to. Have you heard any feedback on that? Are kids getting called out on it when they shouldn't be? Using them in class and such? They are?
Yes, kids are getting called out on it. The teachers will take their phones, and I know teachers have emailed parents, and if they do get their phone signal too many times, I'm pretty sure that they have to give the phones to the office or security before the day starts, so they don't use their phones throughout the day.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Aaron, what is Unity Week? I'm a high schooler, and I don't know what it is.
To be honest, I don't really know what Unity Week is either, but I know they're doing something different every day. It's kind of interesting for me because I go there, and I'm not really sure what it is, but I just know that it's about making more connections and trying to be like, just happier, I would say, and like, more, getting more in tune with the people in our school, making it feel like everyone belongs. So that's my intake on it about Unity Week. I'm quite sure there's more, I just don't know.
Does ASB put it on, or is it the leadership?
Oh, the ASB.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw the posters too. They're like, really great. So that's good. Well, thank you for sharing. Thank you for answering all of our questions. Appreciate you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item, oh, and good luck, semester's almost over. Yeah, yeah, good luck. Yeah. All right, Agenda Item 4.03, Public Comment. Okay, we welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is a policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statements when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As the board president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. Okay, Heather? Heather, name and relationship to the school district?
Okay. Happy New Year. My name is Heather Young, and I'm the proud mom of two boys with disabilities, one of whom is a recent graduate and now living in Germany. He says hello. I wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about Unified Sports. First of all, thank you for your continued support of having a unified program here at Monroe. We are in our second year. Last year, it started partway through the year. For those of you who may not remember, or those at home, Unified Sports is a competitive sports team that, in this case, basketball, that partners up students with and without disabilities as peers, and they play the game together. So you're getting students that wouldn't necessarily have natural opportunities in the course of their classes to interact with each other, and the exposure does both groups a lot of good. The participation, the student participation doubled year over year, and that could also not only be because it's the second year we've had it, but also because of the improvements in transportation support for the after-school activities. So thank you so much. It's clearly reaching the kids that it was intended to reach. However, this year we have four games instead of two, so that's also an improvement, but when you compare it to the 20 games that the varsity boys have, four seems a little sparse. The practices this year are one a week for the kids that have the greatest skills gap in our schools, and I think most of you have kids that have played on sporting teams. If they were only able to practice once a week, I don't think that they would do very well. So we still have some gaps to close in terms of equitable access, but it's definitely improving. There was also, when we initially envisioned this program, it was also supposed to have more than one sport. Most of the other schools have soccer, and so far, we do not, so that's something that I would really appreciate your support in expanding. But more than anything, I really hope that you'll come and check out these kids. I think Director Barnes called it a bucket filler last year, and I think that's a great turn of phrase for this. They only have one home game this year, but there's a couple of games that aren't too far away, so this Thursday, they're playing at Mariner High School at 6:00 PM, and then on the 31st, they're at Arlington, and then their only home game for the year, please, please, please be there, is on February 7th. So these kids play with their entire heart, soul, body, everything. There's nothing else I've ever seen like it, so I hope that you can make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, Katie? Katie, name and your relationship to the school district, and you are speaking on behalf of a group. So we have five minutes.
I'm Katie Woods, and I am speaking on behalf of Monroe Public Schools Foundation Board, and I am a community member. I don't have any kids in the district. The Monroe Public Schools Foundation announced on October 28, 2024, that we are beginning the process of dissolving the foundation after more than 15 years of dedicated work for the Monroe School District and the community. During the process, the board met with several organizations throughout the community to see if we could find a group to continue the foundation's work. After many meetings and individual conversations, we found a group of Monroe community members who will be transitioning to the new Board of Directors of the Monroe Public Schools Foundation. So starting today, Tiffany Martin, who is right there, will serve as the new president of the Monroe Public Schools Foundation. She has a dedicated group of individuals who will work alongside to continue the scholarship program through the foundation. All previous board members will be resigning from their positions. We are hopeful the new board members will be able to continue the work of the foundation and have full support of the Monroe School District. The board has been committed to this community and district for many years and have been able to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars to benefit the Monroe School District staff and community. We are excited to welcome this new board and look forward to the great work that they will be doing moving forward. That's on behalf of the foundation. Now I want to share my personal comments, because I have been part of the foundation in some aspects since 2010. We have helped families that have lost everything in fires. We made sure that they had supplies needed for schools, for school supplies. We've shopped with families that escaped their homes from possible domestic violence situations. We've provided shoes for students, staff grants, major district purchases. The list goes on and on. When we announced that we were in the process of closing, not that we closed, but we were in the process of closing, not one board member reached out to say, what's going on? How can I help? How can this be happening, except for Chuck Whitfield? Other than that, not one of you reached out, and with all the work that the foundation has done for this district, community, and staff, that's very disappointing. We had multiple staff members, community members, elected officials from our community and outside the community contact us to see how they could help, but nobody from the board. So that really speaks loudly of where your values lie, so thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, Agenda Item 5.01, Bond Refunding Opportunity. We have Cory again, and Brenda.
Perfect.
No Brenda, just Cory.
I'll pull you in if I need you. Good evening. Thank you for the time on the agenda this evening. I put together a very brief presentation to update you on a bond refunding opportunity for the Monroe School District, and just if you can help me, great, it looks like you're perfectly where I need you there. You may notice that there's a lot of bisons on all these slides. I work for a firm named DA Davidson. We are founded in Great Falls, Montana about 85 years ago. You might notice, we also have locations in Burlington and, I believe, in Everett, but we have 15 locations in Washington State, and we work and we serve in the communities that we live in. And on page two, I put together just a very brief summary of the differences between the levies and the bonds and why we're talking today. And just as a quick recap, as education program levies are supported by local taxpayers for your educational infrastructure, whether that's for school nurses to reduce class size, to support athletics, extracurricular field trips. Those aren't what we're going to be talking about for refunding today. Those are resources that the community sends directly to your county and is used for those programs. The district doesn't currently have a capital project levy, but you do have a bond outstanding, and that bond was approved by voters in 2015, and those are used for buildings, whether that they're for your middle school or your elementary remodels in combination with your state match funds. But on the next slide, I'm going to show you which bond is eligible for refunding right now. And it's customary, when a school district issues a bond, to garner investor interest that you don't have a bond that's eligible for refinancing immediately. When you maybe purchase a home or purchase a car, it's up to your discretion when you'd like to refinance that, and if it makes sense for you as a household. But when it comes to school bonds, because some of these investments are such a large investment for insurance firms or money managers, they want to guarantee that when they buy your bonds, they're going to be able to hold on to them for a certain period of time, and that window is about to close, where you have the right, but not the obligation to refinancing bonds. It's up to the board to decide if this is the right decision for the community. So this is the eligibility window that's just about to open, and it's not a window that closes anytime soon. It just means that you have any time between now and the maturity of those bonds to consider refinancing. On the next slide, we talked a little about what is a refunding. It is very similar to a home loan refinance or a car loan refinance, where you just issue a new bond with lower interest rate to pay off the old bonds. So it sounds very simple, but because you are a tax-exempt industry, there are a lot of federal provisions that go into that, especially because these are publicly traded bonds by the Securities Exchange Commission, and you will notice on any given day, you'll actually see Monroe School Bonds traded in the secondary market quite frequently. The savings from a bond refunding do not benefit the district office, do not benefit the budgets of the capital facilities. They are in direct reduction of the taxes paid by local citizens, businesses, and homeowners. You recently, actually, it's not recently now, time flies, you did refund bonds prior when they're eligible in 2011, and you saved taxpayers that time $643,000. I believe that was under the leadership of Brenda and her team at that time. On the next slide, you will see an estimate of these bonds that are eligible for refinancing, and this will be something that we'll talk about again, because when the voters approved that bond that was in excess of $100 million, you sold them in two increments. And the reason you did that is because you couldn't spend it so fast, so you split it up. It's kind of like if somebody was going to buy land and build a house, they might do a loan for the land first and then do a loan for the acquisition of property and materials and construction later, because you don't want to start borrowing money upfront and then pay interest on that while it's just sitting in your bank account. So you split those up into two sales. So this is the first sale. You might have another opportunity in 2017 to refinance those bonds as well, but there's $35.3 million in outstanding bonds from 2015, and there's 10 years left. The average coupon is 5%. And if we ran these numbers on Friday afternoon, the rate at that time that we're forecasting for this 10-year bond period is 3.33%, which would result in a total net savings to your taxpayers of an estimated $3.2 million. But because that is spread out over 10 years, the money that is saved in that 10th year might not feel like that amount of money because of inflation. So if you really took what the net present value, what it will feel like to taxpayers, it would be $2.79 million over that 10-year window. Because this is kind of, as I mentioned, a nebulous amount, we put a percentage there on that savings as a percentage of the refunded par, 7.89%. So we can kind of get an idea and compare this and see if this is a savings that makes sense to consider, and I'll show you a slide coming up. So remember that 7.89%. So what does this mean for your taxpayers? We say 2.9 million, or we say 3.2 million in net resources. What this means is this would allow your director of finance, your executive director that completes the budget, to tax an amount less than currently scheduled. And what I have here is a schedule based on our preliminary estimates of what those annual savings would look like. You can see $199,000 in savings in 2025, $339,002.26. That would be the amount that the district and the school board would not have to levy to its taxpayers because your debt is lower. So is that a good number? Is that a big number? Well, I will share this, is that your community has an $11 billion tax base, so to spread $339,000 out between $11 billion in tax base, it might not have a huge impact individually, but one thing that we estimated is that the average household would save about $15 per year. So you could scale that up and down, depending on how big the business is, or how big the home is, or how small the business is. But $15 per year, I would say that would have bought three coffees, but now maybe it's one and a half. Coffee's not quite expensive lately. On Slide 7, just some of the considerations that the board might think about before giving the nod to the executive director to consider moving forward is, by law, we must create a refunding that provides savings in each year. We can't get creative on the structure. You cannot extend the term of the bond, so taxpayers don't want to see your ability to just extend this out further and further, and it does not create new money. You cannot create money for other projects or to offset any other capital, and it is customary for you to get a bond rating. So that is one factor the board should consider, is that you will have to be scrutinized, your finances, your tax base, your economy, your enrollment trends, and you have been scrutinized annually behind the scenes by Moody's, and you guys have survived and have kept your rating, which is a really strong rating, investment-grade credit, but you would have an even deeper dive into your credit score should you decide to do a refunding. So what are the next steps? The next steps is that the board could consider a bond delegation resolution, and what that does is it sets the bumpers for your leadership team, your superintendent and your executive director of finance, to continue to move forward with these ideas that the board has set parameters, and those parameters would be, what would be the savings target? What would be the interest rate limits that you'd accept? And what are the dates that you're allowing this refunding to take place? And those would all be prepared by your legal team that is your fiduciary. I told you to remember that 7.8% number previously. There's this chart there on the middle of this page. It's a little bit small, but it says debt issuance policy. This is a policy that looks fairly old, but it hasn't changed from the state of Washington, and they say that any time there's a refunding where there's nine-plus years, that they would move forward if the present value is at least 5%. So that shows you that your refunding from the state's perspective is a healthy refunding worthy of consideration. So what would be the next steps is to give the nod to the team to start building resolutions, schedule a bond sale date, and then we get ready, and then we monitor. We get ready, so we have all the documentation in order to be able to take advantage of the market, and if for any reason we start moving forward and the markets do not cooperate, and then we hold based on your parameters. So bonds are eligible to be refunded 90 days before June 1st, so that's just right around the corner, so we'd love to answer any questions if you have them.
Cory, you shared a lot of this in our workshop, which is super helpful to give us some parameters for this portion of the meeting. Typically, when you do a refinance, with that process, there is a cost for that as well, of just the labor work that it takes to do that. What does that cost the district to do the refinancing process?
Excellent question. So all the costs have been included in that estimate. So when I shared the 3.2 million in net or the 2.9 million net present value, those all include estimated costs of issuance. Those costs of issuance would be Moody's, our ability to go to the market and find investors to purchase those, and your legal team to provide the prospectus for investors, and we estimated just a little bit around under $300,000 in total for the $33 million refunding.
Thank you.
It's so interesting to be part of a bonding process that I purchased long-term, short-term bonds, yields. We had a conversation between, during a break, one of the items you brought up about the bond rating for Monroe, what was that enhanced by? It's kind of a rhetorical question to you. I know the answer.
Yeah, so, you know, when we talked about one of the other considerations is a rating. There are some boards that are in a different situation than you that might be struggling financially. They might be in binding conditions, and they might be expecting a very negative outcome from said rating. You are not in that position. You are still investment-grade credit. You have been analyzed this year by Moody's and made it through unscathed. 20 other school districts have been downgraded this year, many of them your neighbors, and so you are in a position that is much different than the average Washington State school district right now, and so I think that's a positive, but still something worthy of consideration because there's not many factors in your rating that you can control, whether the power of your economy, the home prices, or even to some extent, enrollment changes, but the one thing the board does have some authority over is your fund balance savings percentages, and that is one of the biggest factors when it comes to your rating, and so that is still in the level that Moody's is deeming. And so that is still in the the level that Moody's is deeming worthy of your current credit score.
Thank you.
And you're also backed by the state credit. So our Washington State has a unique process where they essentially co-sign on your bonds. And if for any reason you cannot pay principal and interest payments, the state steps in and the state is rated AAA. So you get to combine the state's rating with your rating, which means Washington School Bonds are highly desirable, very safe investments.
So this net savings, it all goes back to the voters. It's not, it doesn't go towards the program that the bond was passed for.
Correct. So when you sell a bond, it all gets deposited to the Capital Projects Fund. And then that is completely available only for projects. And then you begin to tax the people to pay back the investors that have on in the debt service fund. So there's this kind of this wall between those two. So this is going to create a mechanism where you do not have to issue as much taxes in the debt service fund for the next 10 years.
Corey, if if our if our crediting situation is a school district were worse, let's say we were in a situation where we were negative. We did not have, we had really low enrollment because of whatever the factor is. Or for the local economy, our housing prices dropped and. And the local economy or school district was lower and or a situation where our fund balance was. Close to zero and we were in a struggling situation. Would that affect the ability for us to be able to refinance the bonds?
It impacts you for two reasons. One is it would just make, so for example, we we wrote a scale in the market, assuming you were going to maintain your current rating of a double A3. Which I mentioned is investment grade credit, very high credit score. The one score below you is an A1. We have this almost this imaginary line between a double A and a single A where there are certain investors that will not consider single A or below. So one thing you would say is you'd have less people interested in your bonds. Therefore, the supply and demand does get a little bit off kilter and it could result in higher interest rates. So what that would mean is it would reduce that savings.
For the taxpayer.
For the taxpayers. So it would be important to keep that credit score. But however, I did mention, you still get that co-signing of a AAA. So it really does offset things. We're seeing schools with an A1 rating or an A2 rating still really completing successful bond refunding transactions. It could be the tune of $30,000 for downgrade. It's not going to be significant enough where it means go no go. It's just going to impact maybe instead of the taxpayers saving $15 per year, it might be 1450.
And then is it, are there districts that have a AAA rating as well? I mean, you said the state has that and then what factors would help us to be able to get to that kind of a rating as a school district?
If my memory is correct, there's only three in the entire state that are AAA. There's not very many schools in the state with a higher rating than you, maybe 10 to 15. Most schools are rated AA3 or lower. I would say Seattle, Merce, it used to be Mercer, I don't think they're anymore, Lake Washington. Bellevue, maybe the only three is a clause in the conversation I don't memorize, but there's about three. And then there's maybe two or three more that are AA1. And I think like 15 maybe that are AA2. So you're really in the higher echelon of ratings. And then most school districts are A1, A2 after that. But yeah, the only thing to control is fund balance. It's a really weird thing to consider because Moody's would like you to have a 17% fund balance. And so we know that that's not a possibility, but any kind of attention, no, anytime any attention to the fund balance is beneficial. But I it's it's a really high lofty goal. Now you're not a bank, yeah.
I think we should move forward with the bond delegation resolution to start to work on that. Do we need a need a motion or just a conversation? Okay.
Yeah, the next step would just be to allow Brenda Corey to start working on that or give them the pass to start working on that. And then bring us something that we can make a decision on.
Yeah, we'll notify your legal team to start drafting documents for review and preview and then for possible doctrine of future meeting. Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Corey. Okay, agenda item 5.02, consideration of updated revisions to policy 4130, title one parent and family engagement. And this is our first reading. David Perator here, anyone ask questions or to present to present?
Yeah, and there's not much to this presentation for this policy. So really, this is just updating our parent and family engagement policy for title one. The biggest changes in kind of what's in front of you today. Most of it is just kind of the technical aspect of they just reclassifying. So calling it title one, they're calling it title one, part A, which is just more specific around the programming. What will we will need to do and this, the board will need to approve this updated policy. But the thing that we don't have in our district at this time is the procedure that accompanies this. And that's as you go through some of the markups. What was in the policy previously said, describe the this, how the district implements this. So this will be something that I need to work on with our building administrators and parent representatives. From all of our schools that are receiving title one A funds. To make sure we have that input and have it articulated as far as what does that family engagement look like at each of our schools? We've increased our title where we're allocating our title one resources this year. Previously, they were all going to Frank Wagner Elementary. This year they're going to Frank Wagner Elementary, which is a school wide program. And then also to Park Place Middle School as well as Bryland's Elementary, which are both targeted assistance. So I'll be working with those building leaders and having them identify some parent. Folks to to give input to this process. One of the things with the biggest things with title one funds is really that parent engagement factor. To really support the learning in school. And so that's a lot of times those family learning evenings that the different schools put on. But that's really the the biggest substantial issues, changes to this policy.
David, do we have WASDA model language for this when we did this policy? Is that part of the process? And and then I also had a question is, is there a title one part B policy that we'll be looking at as well?
I didn't know about part, yeah, yeah, this, this is the WASDA model policy as far as part B that I don't know.
I see the markup, but I'm just, it's you're, the title of it says title one, part A, parent, family engagement. And the other one's just the markup for it. I'm just curious, is there a part B, is there, and there are multiple parts to this that we're looking at?
Yeah.
And part is. Looking at doing another part, another part of title one engagement? Okay.
Yeah, and and part A is the primary funding source for our federal dollars that come through title one for public schools.
Okay, thank you.
Part of one of those officials that is responsible for acronyms. It's Washington State School Directors Association, WASDA. We throw around acronymism. I make, I hold staff accountable for their acronymism. So there we go. I'm covering for our side.
All right, thanks, David.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item 6.09, approval of the consent agenda is our motion.
I moved the Monroe School District Board of Directors, approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated January 13, 2025.
Is there a second, second? There's a motion in the second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items listed and presented in the consent agenda dated January 13, 2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item is passed five to zero, agenda item super, sorry, agenda item 7.01 superintendent update. We've got one of those.
Alrighty, so I wanted to just give a brief update on some of the elements of our strategic plan that we're working on right now. Definitely not all exhaustive for sure, but I do want you to know every, I have a particular file system in my office. Monday morning, pull this, James likes this. Monday morning, I'm going to, I pull this out. And this is literally driving the work of our of our district. So I I just wanted to do a brief update on a couple of these items. As far as goal one, all students are ready for their future. I just want to reiterate the system that we're trying to build, objective 1.1. Is to ensure graduating seniors who complete a specified pathway are guaranteed acceptance to a post-secondary school or placement in a high demand livable wage job. One thing that Shannon and I met with Hanover, it's a outfit that we're consulting with and Hanover today. I have confidence that with their support, we will be able to have our portrait of a graduate done by the end of the school year. First steps is they have worked with many districts, surrounding districts, states across the US. On creating a portrait of a graduate. They'll basically develop a survey run up by us. We'll have staff, students, families fill that out. And then once we have a draft, I'll start running some focus groups, much like we did with the strategic plan. With all of those groups to say, hey, what do you think? Does this capture what you believe is necessary for our kids to have prior to earning their their diploma? So that's on track. We also have. One of the key strategies for this is just around making sure that our pathway offerings meet workforce demands. And Shannon and I have meeting number two with Snow Isle tomorrow. I met with them, oh boy, the director about a month ago now, just to start brainstorming. What could we do here, Snow Isle like, you know, as as far as a skill center is concerned? There's a good chance that we will be able to have potentially a branch campus of Snow Isle here. With programs or classes that are obviously aligned with workforce demand. So livable wage, high demand certifications that students wouldn't have to travel all the way to Payne Field to take advantage of. There is a. Skill center in Mount Vernon that does have some branch campuses. So their director is going to meet with Shannon and the director of Snow Isle and myself tomorrow. So again, no decisions have been made. But if all things work out really well, it would be September of 2026, we we could potentially have something here. If it goes really well, long term wise. I think the demand will be really high, but if we develop a branch campus. And we all decide here that we would like to expand and have our own skill center, that's even a possibility. That's not, that's not a, that's actually a plausible thing to happen in this community. So very excited about that. We, and I'll just keep you updated as we have further conversations. 1.2, it's all around train, high levels of learning for all of our kids. Obviously, that's ultimately why why we're here. One of the strategies is to simply around collecting and analyzing student data to help us make good decisions. Are we meeting our targets? If not, why not? How do we adjust? We have, as you know, iReady is our diagnostic that we use as a district. It's fall, winter and spring. Students are taking that diagnostic right now. And we will be presenting the results four weeks from now. Along with. What we're going to do with the data. We're going to have a lot of celebrations, no doubt, but we'll still have areas that are concern areas for us. And we'll have an answer to you all as far as what what are we going to adjust to get better, better results? 4.3 in the strategic plan, I want to thank David and Joy. They've been working really hard on developing some sort of a mechanism. To first ensure that our families have a clear understanding of how to access services. And to make sure there's no barriers to understanding. And then how do we get real time feedback from our families when it comes to their satisfaction with such things? As the IEP process for kids. And David, I think this is going to roll out soon, maybe in this next month. End of January, when our families have IEP meetings. They will get some sort of a communication out for them to give anonymous feedback about that experience. So that David's team can make real time adjustments to how how are we doing with our families in 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 those meetings about their children? So thank you, David. And then last one for me, and I'm going to hand it over to David, is that we also have an objective around. Our goal around making sure our family and community members are connected to our schools and their valued partners. One of our objectives is to develop a world-class customer service model to ensure that our students, family, staff and community members feel seen, valued and supported. And one of the strategies is just to recognize and celebrate great customer service. And so we will start doing that more regularly here. So I wanted to share a postcard that we received. It's a very nice picture about right near there. Says, Dear Mr. Woodward, my children attend a small school in Bothell that does not have its own gym. So we work with many other schools to rent gym space. Sometimes this can be very challenging. Recently, we rented the auxiliary gym at Park Place Middle School. When we arrived for practice, we were having trouble with the basketball hoops. We contacted Mr. Terry Olson and even though it was outside normal school hours, he's able to immediately contact the local custodian Greg. Promptly came to our rescue, I like that, and allowed our players to get their practice back on track. We appreciate the help and support we receive from these two gentlemen and wanted to say thank you. Providence Boys JV Basketball Team. So that that's pretty cool because often what y'all hear, it's really when people are upset. So I know that Adam and Terry and and Stacy and Joan, our whole facilities team. Been listening, making lots of adjustments. And in the meantime, we we have just great efforts from great people all the time that goes unrecognized. So I'll probably get Terry in here to embarrass him a little bit soon. He doesn't know this came in, but I'll make sure I visit him tomorrow. And then finally, we, one of the other areas that focus areas for us right now is under objective area 1.5. And that's just access to quality pre-K services. That's one of the things that you brought up right when I landed, like there was some efforts, I think, kind of pre-COVID to start talking about. What can we do so more kids have access to preschool services? And David's been working hard with Joey on that one and he's going to give a little update.
Yeah, thank you. And with that, and so this is also lives in the strategic plan under objective 2.1. So the objective is school, build school and classroom communities where all students are acknowledged, valued, feel safe and know they belong. And one of the key strategies there is ensure students receive instruction and support services. Within the general education classroom with their peers to the extent they are able. And so as a district, we've done a nice job. We still have a lot of room to grow, but as far as building our inclusive practices for all students, kindergarten through 12th grade. One of the areas that we are trying to improve on in our district is our. Our ability for our early learners, our kids that are three through five, to be able to get more general education and inclusive opportunities with with. With with their peers. And so right now, in the past, we've had a more of a just a traditional developmental preschool program that is all 100% special education services. So those students aren't getting that those more general opportunities with with other students. This year, we built out the, with our transition to kindergarten programs. Where we are having more students who have IP's placed in those programs. And then instead of them having to have a separate developmental preschool classroom. Our, one of our special education preschool teachers and parent educators are going in to support them within those models. And that is for four-year-olds. We still had a, a, a area of need, which is for our students, our younger students that are three and early four-year-olds. And they weren't having those opportunities. So what we are, we are hoping to get operationalized beginning in February. Is a blended developmental preschool model where we will have a dual certified teacher who is dual certified. Both special education and general education. Will have students with IP's placed in the classroom. But then we will also open that up to families with students that aren't on IP's. To be able to participate in that program as well. So it increases that opportunity for other three and four-year-olds in the community. But it also helps to bolster that on that programming. So the hope is, what's this more than a hope, we have a plan. Is that we'll, we'll, like I said, start that in February. So we'll be doing, we're going to start doing communication out to families this week. The child find out process for students on IP's. We have an idea of students that would be appropriately placed in that program. But we're going to be getting information out to families so that if they have a three or four-year-old and they'd like to, their kids to participate in the in the program. And a way to do that. For those students that aren't IP, are not on IP's. It will be a tuition-based program. And so Joy and I worked with Brenda last week and came up with kind of a formula. And so we're anticipating that'll be about $499 per month for students to participate in that. We'll also have a sliding scale for students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And that is one of the reasons coming forward to tonight is. What we'll want to do at the next board meeting is, and we'll put that in front of you, is is have you approve a fee structure for this. What we'll want to do at the next board meeting is, and we'll put that in front of you, is is have you approve a fee structure for this, for this new program model. And then, like I said, information should be going out to families by the end of this week. And the hope is to get this. Started in in earnest, beginning of second semester, so very beginning of February. And we'll be piloting it this year to see what the level of interest is in the community. And then there's the the chance of. Expanding that model to all of our developmental preschools as we move forward.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, David. Hey, agenda item 8.01, board reports and or comments. Directors.
Go bear cats.
I'll jump in. Just one thing I wanted to just do an update. I know the high school sent a thing out today. My wife and daughter went to the clinic today. We've been dealing with all the crud during. During the Christmas break a little bit, and I know a lot of staff and students have as well, but there is a notice that went out that they have some confirmed cases of whooping cough at our high school. And we have students and. Obviously, kids are really good at sharing yuckies. And so. Just as a. Advisory, it said in there, just keep your student from home and contact your healthcare provider if your student becomes ill with anything like rain, noses, sneezing, mouth cough that worsens. With a one to two weeks of coughing that occurs, spasms, especially if it's followed by vomiting or whooping. That is a, a rough one. And I know that there's been a lot of stuff out there. So please stay healthy and watch your. Just washing your hands and taking your vitamins and all those types of things. Drinking lots of water, Jen, I'll say that for you. And then I'll also. Bring out my inner James and I wanted to go back to Superintendent Woodward, had a question about with the strategic plan. With all of the updates that we're doing, do we have a goal in mind of when we can get a lot of the TBDs on those?
Yeah.
Sections in there.
You bet. It's kind of, I'll get, I can give you all an update on that soon. I've just been kind of checking them off and 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 housing them on one, one big document. A lot of the data we'll collect of its survey data. Towards the end of the year, I'll give you one example. Because we have to kind of, we want to sort of like for asking parents questions for anecdotal data. We want to get the portrait of the graduate done first, and then maybe at the end of the year, ask about customer service and so on and so forth. So. Definitely initially, I thought we could do a lot more sooner. But just in the interest of not fatiguing our our folks, we just have to kind of have a good measure.
Okay. Approach. Well, I know for the big one for this year was to get the strategic plan in place for the school year. Do you think that we would be able to have maybe a lot of that data in place for the following school year?
Yeah.
As we're, as we're going, because I know a lot of that is, some of it's dependent on annual data that we don't collect right away. And so that, I know it's, you're kind of at the helm of the calendar.
Yeah, for sure. That would, that's a reasonable goal for us by the time we kick off next year to have at least baseline in all those areas.
And then I have a few other things. One, that the, going back to the sickness stuff, that obviously affects attendance. And I was just curious, is in our next meeting, if we're going to have maybe an attendance update on how things are going. Obviously, we have a lot of kids that are sick, but that made me also think about our attendance reports that you've been giving.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay.
For sure.
And then I had one other thing that I follow up on was one, I know that we had, you know, Katie Woods was really upset about the, the board's response to the. Her perceived lack of interest in Monroe Public School Foundation. I'm excited to get to know Tiffany as well and connect with her. And would love to see our superintendent connect with her as well. I know that you were in a lot of connection with Katie and we were really surprised at, because when she did present, it wasn't. It might be, we were told that it is closing. And so we're all really surprised at that. And so. I would love to see us continue the conversation with Monroe Public Schools Foundation because it is a valued thing.
You bet.
Regardless of that perception. I know it's easy to throw rocks at the school board when you think something is not important, but. Would love to be able to see us make that connection with our board. So.
So I can tell you, Tiffany, I'll put you on the spot. I think we're going to meet 3:30 on Wednesday, if that still works. So we're already on it. And to just build a really positive proactive relationship moving forward for sure.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. That was the last thing I wanted to check out. Thank you.
All right, I, Happy New Year first. I know we're a few days into it, but. I didn't get a chance to say it before now. So Happy New Year to everyone. It's been a little bit of a rough adjustment going back to school with my three kids. I can imagine many people feel the same. There's not enough coffee. In the day, I feel like right now, as I continue to make this adjustment. But tonight, really, I just, I want to celebrate more students. My favorite, my favorite thing to do. So we had some awesome things that happened. To kind of finish out last year and then some things that have happened so far this year. So. For last year, we had two different student athletes at Monroe High School that were named Westco Player of the Year. Which is a huge feat for West Coast South football. We had Mason Davis on the football team that was. Named Player of the Year and for Westco North Girls Soccer, we had Sydney Garner, who was Offensive Player of the Year. So just a huge congratulation to those two student athletes. We also had two student athletes who were named All-State 3A First Team Student Athletes. And this was a new one for me. I hadn't, I hadn't seen this one before, but so this one is, it's voted on by a committee of the Washington State. Football Coaches Association, at least these two are because they're both on our football team. We had Mason Davis, who was recognized first team as a returner. So when the ball's punted, kicked down the field, he catches it and he returns it. And it was amazing to watch him play. And then Brennan Shepard. Who's on the defensive line, he was recognized for first team All-State for 3A school. So a huge congratulations to those two gentlemen. And then we also get to congratulate a teacher who just recently was awarded Teacher of the Year by our very own Ward Roney Jr., VFW Post 7511. And that is Miss Tonia Maines from Park Place Middle School. She is an absolutely incredible teacher. And so it's, it's awesome to see another one of our teachers recognized by the local VFW for their contributions. To our students. So congratulations, Tonia. And I hope that this week, everybody stays healthy, but also get out and support those sports teams. With everything that they've got going on, it truly is some of the best entertainment you are going to find. And we have amazing student athletes. So. That's all I've got this week.
Okay, I just wanted to shout, give a shout out to the high school staff and Brett. For doing all of the work around supporting students as we transition into a sixth period day. Got to see his amazing whiteboard when we toured on Thursday and. And I actually just pulled up the email that explains what Unity Week is. So. I got it. I got the information. It's a special week, all about building connections, fostering relationships and showing gratitude for the amazing students and staff who make Monroe High School so great. That's what it is. Yeah, I knew that's what you meant. I knew it. Okay. And then I wanted to shout out Adam and the, and facilities. For the new video doorbell entry at Monroe High School. Thank you for keeping our kids safe. And Jesse. Jesse, I meant. All right. And covered Unity Week and Holly and Sean, I just want to thank you for all of the communication that you provide us. I think you call us, you text us, you email us, you keep us in the loop. With all of the things that are happening in our school district. And I appreciate it so much. It allows us to do the work of the board. And I think that for a while there, we were in all sorts of directions, trying to. Continue to do great things for students and finding our way and without consistent leadership. And so I just want to say, I appreciate, appreciate you both. For providing that and being such a great team. Yeah. And and really just clearly communicating and being super transparent with us about all of the things, good and bad. And in between. So thank you both for doing that. And. There's a junior gold medalist at Monroe High School, by the way. I've known him since he's a, since he was a kindergarten jujitsu. I told my son to be friends with him. I said, be friends with that guy, but he is, they really are friends, but he's a junior gold medalist. Amazing. Yeah. All right, it is 6:01 PM and tonight's meeting is adjourned.